Do we get in the background? All right. Call to order, the April 30th meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We only have one item on our agenda. This is a newly scheduled meeting, so we only have one item on our agenda, 1600 Osgood Street. This was, this introduction to this proposal was brought to the Board of Selectmen last Monday, or a week ago Monday. Hope people had the chance to see that. We are going to get a presentation about the proposed project, a general idea of what's going to be asked of us. We can then have a discussion about that amongst ourselves. We may, we probably allow for some comment if people have comments, mostly about the process that we're going to, or questions about the process that we're going to undertake. And then we may discuss future meetings as well as, you know, really what we're looking at in terms of an idea for potential zoning changes. So with that, I will call up, good timing, Mr. Preston. Call up John Smolak to discuss.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Board. The record, John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn, Project Attorney. First, I wanted to thank you for accommodating our schedule, and I know it's a busy time of the year with time meeting coming around, but we think this is an opportunity that the town has that it hasn't had for a long time, and hope you agree that it's a significant redevelopment opportunity for 1600 Osgood Street. And so before we start our formal presentation, just wanted to introduce you to several members of the project team who are here that you may hear from this evening. First is Sean O'Brien, who's a Vice President of Development for Hillwood Enterprises. He's actually in Hillwood's Atlanta office, and he is representing Hillwood Development, the proposed project developer of the site, or redeveloper of the site. Also with us is Nate Kirschner, who's a Senior Project Manager with Langin Engineering and Environmental Services, who's a project engineer based out of the Boston office of Langin. And the purpose of this informal discussion is really twofold, as we see it. First, to identify, in general terms, the proposed development program, or redevelopment program for this site. And second of all, to identify some of the zoning changes that we see we may need to accomplish the redevelopment of this property. As the chairman had indicated, we met with the Board of Selectmen last week and introduced Hillwood to the, to the Board, and the Board seemed very interested and very excited about the opportunity. At that point, we didn't provide any plans or specifications and other material, simply because this was an introduction to the project. And so today, what we're going to do is take the next step and sort of present to you some of the concepts that we have for this proposed redevelopment, and then within that context, discuss some of the potential zoning changes. We also today did submit a formal request to the Board of Selectmen to hold a special town meeting, and with that request, we submitted a copy of what you just received today, which was just a set of proposed zoning adjustments that we feel, again, would be necessary to accomplish our redevelopment. So for this evening's presentation, what we want to do is first, provide you with some background on the property. Everyone is intimately familiar with 1600 Osgood Street, but we want to take a look at it in a different context. And then, secondly, walk you through some of the views that we see it as you're passing by the site, to get an, sort of, an idea of what the redevelopment might look like in the future. And also, provide you a summary of the development program as we see it at this point, and then lastly, provide you with some views of some potential structures on the site and the buildings on the site to sort of, again, identify conceptually the massing and the height of the proposed building, which is proposed to be behind, located behind Buildings 20 and 21, which is the 400 square foot office space, 400 square feet of office space that you currently see as you drive by on 1600 Osgood Street. So before we get started, what I'd like to do, though, is introduce you to Sean O'Brien and Hillwood. And Sean will speak to a little bit about Hillwood and their development company, and I think we're really fortunate to have such a development company that's, that's interested in this site and has the wherewithal and the financial strength and the, and the experience to, to really do a nice job on this site. And so with that said, Sean, feel free to-
Thank you, John.
My name is Sean O'Brien. I'm with Hillwood, the Vice President of Development. Flip the slide. A little bit about Hillwood. We were founded in 1988 by Ross Pro Jr. of the Pro family, based in Dallas. We've got offices throughout the United States. I work out of our Atlanta, Georgia office. We do do a lot of different types of real estate development, but the slight industrial is really our core business. So we really like this site. Flip the next slide. So just a brief footprint of all of our offices and projects, but we really like this site for several reasons. One, for the proximity to Boston and the, and the population around here, and two, the access off of 495. And it's a great chance to redevelop, you know, a once thriving site into kind of a new, modern take on a use for that, which is going to be very high-tech, and it, I think it works well for the area, and we're very excited about this site. We've done multiple developments for this tenant, and I think we've upwards of about 30 now. So this is their latest prototype, and will be the, like I said, very, very high-tech, automated material handling equipment and some robotics inside it as well to help with the operation. So we're very excited about the site, and thank you for your, considering our project.
So with that said, what I want to do is to just take you through some, as I said, some perspectives or aerials of the site. Everyone certainly aware of the site, 1600 Osgood Street. And just, just to back up some additional information I wanted to mention to you, I mean, ideally, we would have tried to accommodate the schedule for the annual time meeting for warrant articles, and we thought about it hard, and we said that we didn't want to rush things too quickly to, to get this to the annual time meeting. But then again, we didn't want to wait forever either, and so either waiting to the next May or even to September would, would be tough for us because, you know, it's obviously very difficult to time a real estate deal with the annual town meeting. So, so again, we've, we're hoping that the Selectmen would be looking to call a special town meeting in sometime in June, and all depends on, you know, a lot of things, including how this board feels about this proposal. And so without further discussion on that, I just wanted to mention, just looking at the aerial, you're quite familiar with the property in the, in the general vicinity. 1600 Osgood Street is right in the center of that aerial. To the right-hand side, low right hand is south, and you see the Great Lawrence Sanitary District, you see Wheelabrader, you see the Lawrence Municipal Airport to the south, Hope Road, which leads to Osgood Street, and then Osgood Street leads to, you know, from south to north, past the site, to the right-hand side, you know all of the different companies there. There are a lot of landscape companies, Jimmy's Pizza, the Animal Hospital, then to Bradford Street, and ultimately to, to the Haverhill City Municipal Boundary, and then beyond which is, is the Ward Hill Connector, which leads to 495. And as many of you know, the, this, the Ward Hill Connector to 495 was built specifically for Western Electric when it was constructed back in the 50s. And so at that time, it had accommodated 12,000 to 13,000 employees at the time. And so those who were around at that time knew what the, the impacts, or how much of an economic engine this, this, that site was to the Merrimack Valley. We have a fraction of those jobs that would be proposed under this proposal, but nevertheless, we think it's a, a strong project in terms of redevelopment. So, so just moving on to the next slide, we just wanted to sort of identify, Nate, if you could, next slide, please, is the existing conditions of the property. The site is 160 acres in size, has an excess of 100, 1.8 or 1.9 million square feet of existing space that was originally designed for Western Electric. And shown on the site is the existing impervious areas and also the green areas on the site, which are all remnants of the old Western Electric single-user factory from the 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s. And so if we can move to the next slide, it's the same slide that you had just seen, except it's overlaid with the existing solar array that this board approved. And so that solar includes the solar that's at, on, on the rooftops of Buildings 20 and 21, which are the two buildings that you see right in front of Osgood Street. Also, there's rooftop solar on Building 70, which is behind the, the main manufacturing area, as well as the ground solar to the rear and to the north of, of those buildings. And so just to get your bearings, I know all of you have been past this site thousands of times, but the next series of slides really run through what you see from Osgood Street at various views of the site. So Nate, if you could just move to the next slide. Again, these are various views. This is a view directly from Orchard Hill Road, looking northwest towards the site. So the police station would be further back on the site, if we can go to the next slide, which is, this is the south driveway, the southernmost access point to the site, and you see the building beyond, in that location, with the manufacturing space behind it. Moving further along in the next slide, this is just a view directly from south to north, from the south driveway. The landscaping is in the front, as, that was part of the screening that was approved by this board as part of site plan review, when the parking was, was redeveloped in the front of Buildings 20 and 21, probably about eight, probably about 10 years ago. The next slide, if we could. This slide is directly looking across the street from Beechwood Drive, again, showing the existing landscaping in this location. If we could move to the next slide. Just moving further along north, this is at the, again, just a slightly different angle on Beechwood Drive, looking towards the site, if moving on to the next slide, if we could, Nate. And this is from the Jimmy's Pizza parking lot, again, looking at some of the landscaping in front. Further moving north, the next slide is sort of a view from 1635 Osgood Street, which is the Muske's Landscaping driveway. And as you see, the road starts to bend, then the next slide, if we could. And this is another view from the, from the Monroe Landscaping driveway, again, looking towards the site from, for a northwesterly direction. And then the last slide is again, the, the last driveway in this location before you hit the, the hospital, which is a view over the ball fields area directly to the site. So, so again, those are the existing perspectives, and, and so the next slide is really a beginning of our discussion of the development program. And so what we're planning to do in terms of the site is to basically divide it into three separate lots, lots A, B, and C, as long, as well as a proposed subdivision roadway between lots A and C, which are the yellow and sort of the tanish lot to the left where the ball fields are. And so lots A and C are intended to remain in the ownership of the current owner, and Lot B, which is about 110 acres, is to be sold to Hillwood Development. Moving to the next slide, just to get a little more deep into this site plan, again-
Can you, can you, I know, most of us probably know, but could you just go back, just give us a five-minute overview of what Hillwood proposes to do with their, with their portion? Just, everyone's kind of heard about the project, but I think before we get into the kind of specifics of the site, it'd be nice just to have it, so for anyone who hasn't heard yet, just-
Yeah. I was actually going to get to that right next, but I'll, but I'll go to, well, just let me back up a bit. I mean, Lot A is going to, is intended to remain the same as, as is, meaning it's carving out the existing 400 square feet of existing office space with additional parking, and will have access points directly in the current location, which are the two access, two out of the four access points along this property that have direct and exclusive use to the 400 square feet of office. Lot B, which is the proposed development program, that's a lot, again, of 110 acres in size, where we're proposing a e-commerce storage and distribution center to be located on that property. That building will have a first four blueprint, footprint of approximately 705,000 square feet, including about 60,000 square feet of ground floor office and, and sort of a lunch area and/or a break area, and will include an additional four stories above that initial plate, for a total of 3.6 million square feet of gross floor area for that building. Because of the highly automated nature of this facility, the warehouses of old really don't fit into this new model. I mean, 10 years ago, we never imagined that the supply chain would change so dramatically in terms of e-commerce. And the current zoning that's within, this is within the I-2 zoning district, was really developed back in the 70s, when the John Brown Master Plan came out and, at the time that, and the I-2 zoning district hasn't essentially changed in terms of its allowed uses and dimensional requirements. And at that time, the design for warehouse use and distribution use was usually single-floor high bay warehouse, and, and that's why you have the facility that you have here today. And so again, the, the change is to this e-commerce warehouse distribution facility for a large internet retailer, whose name we cannot disclose at this time because of confidentiality reasons. Lot B will also include, in addition to the building, will include approximately 2,000 parking spaces, both for vehicles and for trucks to the rear of the site. And so combined, the site will have about, I'd say, about 35,000 to 3,700 parking spaces on it, which is about 1,000 parking spaces less than what you have today. And this redevelopment will also have less impervious surfaces than you have today as well. So that's the development program for Lot B. Because of the, the tenant, Hillwood's tenants' needs with respect to that building, what we're also going to need to do is migrate the existing solar to Lot C. And so Nate, if we could just move to Lot C. So Lot C is approximately 30 acres in size, and is the location of the existing ball fields. You see the crosshatched area on that, on that lot represents where solar panels would need to be relocated. Solar panels on the rooftop of Buildings 20 and 21 on, on proposed Lot A, the existing building will remain, but they're remaining because everything, every building on the site, except for Buildings 20 and 21, are going to be demolished as part of this redevelopment program. The solar on the rooftop of Building 70, which is the building behind the existing warehouse, along with all the ground floor, or ground area solar, is going to have to be moved to Lot C. And in connection with that, we have some, we have a discussion about some zoning tweaks that may help to try to migrate that solar further away from Osgood Street, and that's, that's part of a discussion a little bit later on. But-
Is the location of the solar, are there wetlands over there, it looks like it?
There are. There's a, the, the entire site was redelineated and NORAD was issued, so the, the location of the solar as, again, this is conceptual, but it's in a, in a location where, where we feel this will work for, for the solar fields.
Can I ask a question about the solar? So if they're demolishing the buildings where they were, but they're moving them over, does that mean they're going to support still another bill? Like, what are they supporting there if they're coming off the rooftop? Like, what are they, what's the solar for being-
Well, it's, it's, it's basically the same six-megawatt solar facility that was approved by this board. So nothing will change with respect to that, other than the location of certain components. And so I think this board, although I wasn't part of those meetings, I understand the board was fairly insistent about having the ability to make those panels mobile in the event that redevelopment opportunities would come up in the future, and, and that's what we have here. So, so basically, again, the rooftop solar that's on the existing building 20 will stay, but all the other solar will have to be relocated due to demolition, the extensive demolition that'll have to occur, also the relocation of all the utilities, all the abatement. And so we're basically starting from scratch with a new site for everywhere other than the existing Buildings 20 and 21, essentially.
So the soccer, the fields would be off use. There are soccer fields right now, so that would go away.
They would eventually, that's true.
Yeah.
But we're trying to maintain that use for as long as possible. We have a long process to go through, and this is just the very beginning. So we'll try to accommodate as much as we can in cooperation with the current owner. So, sure. And so the next, if we could move to the next slide, this is just a overall site plan with identifying the, the green areas, also the white areas, in terms of parking and loading, in different colors as, as shown up there. And so note that the right side or the southern side of the, of the portion of the site is going to be, remain largely unchanged in terms of existing vegetation. There's not going to be any change in vegetation in that location. Same with the northern boundary or tip of the property along the, along the Bradford side of the property. Again, that's existing vegetation that'll remain, some of which is, is wetland area, but also it's an area that's not really necessary for our redevelopment program. And again, we're probably reducing parking by about 1,000 spaces on site and reducing impervious surfaces, so, and also maintaining the solar use, which we think is, is important as part of this proposal as well. So now, what, much of what is being proposed really can be accomplished under the I-2 zoning district. We understand that the, and everyone is aware, that the 40R overlay is due to be scheduled to be voted to be repealed. This project doesn't need the 40R zoning overlay to, to exist, but it needs to have a few zoning changes to accomplish what we need to accomplish. As I said before, the manufacturing and distribution facilities in terms of, in terms of their size, their location, in terms of automation, have changed dramatically over the years, and so instead of being more horizontal, they need to be more vertical. And so the changes that we would be seeking from a zoning perspective would be the maximum building height, the floor area ratio for Lot B, and also some adjustments to the solar provisions in the zoning bylaw, which relate to lots A and C, to accommodate this, this change. And so for that reason, as to building height, we would need to pursue a request to amend the zoning to allow for a maximum building height for Lot B of 105 feet, and a floor area ratio of one to one, to accommodate, again, the proposed building on Lot B. Keep in mind just a few things at first thought. You might think, well, geez, 105 feet seems very tall for this site and for the surrounding area. But keep in mind, in the zoning district, currently, manufacturing buildings can be at a height of 85 feet. There is a provision within the bylaw that allows for the, the construction of a pharmaceutical manufacturing silo of 115 feet. We're somewhere in between that, and realistically, the, the rooftop is probably going to be on average around 95 feet, but we need the extra 10 feet with respect to stair, stairwells and other, stair towers and other features that would bring us up to that height of 105 feet. In addition, the current 40R zoning overlay allows for windmills up to 150 feet, which is going to be going away. You also have an existing stack on the site that's over 150 feet, that's going to be demolished. You also have the waste energy plant stacks to the back and the rear of the site by Wheelabrader that are there. This is primarily an industrial area. There are a couple of residential uses in the area that are associated with the landscaping yards, contractors' yards. There's residential to the rear, beyond that, subdivisions along Bradford Street as well, we're mindful of that. But we think that, you know, this, this level of height, and I'll, and I'll demonstrate that shortly, is something which is compatible for this particular site and, and the surrounding uses. In terms of the FAR, the floor area ratio, which is really the ratio of the floor area to the lot area, so what you do is you, you determine that by dividing the gross floor area by the lot area to get the ratio. The current I-2 zoning district has a floor area ratio of .5 to 1. But note that with respect to the CDD districts, that floor area ratio is .75 to 1, which is, again, across the street. The B4 zoning district allows for a floor area ratio of 1.5 to 1. The downtown overlay district allows for an FAR of 1. Sub-District A allows for an FAR of 2.0 by special permit. So we think an FAR of 1 to 1, or somewhere between .75 and 1, is something that is, that is within the realm of reasonableness in terms of, you know, comparing it to other FAR requirements in other zoning districts. So, so what does a building that's 105 feet really look like? And the next slide, if we could show it, this is what you see of the building behind Buildings 20 and 21. You don't see it. This is a straight-on shot from Osgood Street, towards Buildings 20 and 21. Below that diagram is sort of a, a cross-section, and I'll explain why you don't see that building to the rear, if we can go to the next slide. So basically, if you look to the right-hand side of that slide, that cross-section, a person, that's, the right-hand side represent- a person, that's, that right-hand side represents a person standing on Osgood Street looking directly at buildings 20 and 21. Osgood Street starts out at an elevation of 60. Going across the parking lot to buildings 20 and 21 is about a 400-foot distance. Uh, that parking lot stays at about an elevation of 60 to 61 feet, so it's relatively flat. And when you get to buildings, uh, 20 and 21, they're about average around 43 feet. Some areas are higher because of the lower elevation as you get north to the site, so it brings that building height up to some places as high as 55 feet. And so, uh, immediately behind, uh, buildings, uh, 20 and 21, in this location, the, the parking area right behind buildings 20 and 21, uh, the elevation of that parking behind those buildings drops to an elevation of about 47 feet. Uh, so that's about a 15-foot drop from the elevation of 61 at Osgood Street. Uh, and then so you go from that location and you go to the tallest part of this, uh, new building, 105 feet, that's a distance of about 1,000 feet, uh, from Osgood Street. So if you're looking, uh, from, uh, Osgood Street with a view, um, you're looking across building 20 and 21, this is why you don't, and because of the dip in elevation and because of the distance of 1,000 feet from Osgood Street, you don't see that building from that straight-on shot. So, if we can move to the next...
If, if I may, um, the building is, they're now said is at lower height than the first two buildings, right?
Which, uh...
Then, uh, the buildings in the front. I mean, how tall are the two buildings in the front?
Well, the building, the buildings 20 and 21, they, they vary. They're about an average of around 43 feet.
Okay.
There are some sections that are about 38 and a half feet and some sections that are as high as 55 feet.
So if the new building is 95, the delta would show, right?
Well, I mean, what you don't see is because of the perspective.
Yeah, I, I guess that's a little bit, but I'm just trying to establish a baseline. I mean, I know where you're going, and I think it's okay, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, when the first one you showed the picture, I wish you would show a picture of it with the building behind it.
Well...
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole point. You don't see the building there, but, but you see it from other views, and that's, that's what I'm getting to next.
Yeah, okay.
So if we can go to the next slide, Nate? Now you're looking at a, at a view of the site. This is a view from the police station parking lot. If you were standing on top of, uh, the corner of the parking lot at the corner of Orchard Hill Road, which is about 10 or 15 feet above, uh, um, Orchard Hill, uh, Drive, you would be looking in this perspective. This is where, as you're driving down Osgood Street, and so this area, this is Osgood Street, it's not labeled. Uh, this is where you start to first see the break in the trees, the existing tree line. And so you, you're, it's very difficult to even see it at this location. If we go to the next slide...
Okay, so can you go back to the last one?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is that this slide envisions 105-foot building behind this building, right? That it's built, and if you were standing at the police station, you wouldn't see it?
Well, you'd probably see some of it in these areas.
Right, but I'm just saying from this view, in this view, that's...
Basically what you, what you would generally see. These aren't the exact trees, but they're based on real life in terms of what we see based on photographs. And so, uh, the next slide is just if you're in that same location, but you're right at the intersection of Orchard Hill Drive, which is 15 foot, feet lower, and you're a little bit further north on the property, you start to see, uh, the building, uh, in this view. Again, you're on, uh, this is Osgood Street and Orchard Hill, and you see, uh, that, that segment of the building, that location.
And is that gray building meant to be 105 feet?
That's correct. And so, and again, um, this is an exercise in massing and, and building height. In terms of site plan, site land, site, site plan review, the board is gonna have to weigh in, uh, on building materials, style, coloring, landscaping and the like. And this is purely an exercise to show you basically what the height would be, what height would look like from these different vantage points. So if we can go to the next slide, and again, this is, uh, from the Jimmy's Pizza parking lot. Again, you don't really see the building in this location because of the circumstances I described. And then if you go to the next slide, this is again by, sort of by Muske's landscaping. It's between, uh, the northernmost access road, which is in this location, and the next access road to the north. So, uh, this is a vantage point where you do see the building again. And then, once you get beyond this location and you're driving further north, the road starts to bend. So, uh, when you get to Bradford Street, which is about 1,500 feet further down the road, it's very difficult to see any of this building. So, uh, and again, I encourage you to take a drive out there and, and take a look at yourself to see what vantage points you might see and what you think you might see in terms of the building. But that's generally, uh, initially what, what you're looking at. Because, again, because of the elevations and because the building is so far back on the site.
John, can you go back to the very first one you showed with a straight-on view?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one?
Yeah.
Are you saying that the new building, if you were standing on Osgood Street looking in right there, you would not see a building behind it?
That's correct, based on the elevations.
Okay.
It's odd, it's unusual. You would think you would see it.
Okay.
If you go, if you go further back in the lot and if you get up higher in the elevations, you'll see, you'll see that, yeah. But again, this is someone, you know, in terms of, most of us aren't doing that. We're driving on Osgood Street and we're driving by, and this is basically what you might see.
John, can I just ask another question on this point?
Sure.
So I think I understood you, but just to be clear, this is the sightline that you're basing...
Yeah.
The conclusion that you won't see this when you're on this side of Osgood.
Yeah.
Is the origin point of this sightline, the ground or six feet up like a person standing?
I think it's from the viewpoint of a, of a person six feet up standing. If I'm...
Yeah, it's, it's taken, in this case and in most cases, it's taken from six feet up. If it was taken from a car, your, your sightline is typically about three feet. So that angle actually gets steeper, you'd, you're less likely to see it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I think, John, the reason why I asked the question is that I hearken to the building on, uh, 114 in Danvers, the office building, uh, that got built there. Yeah, that looks so dreadfully out of place without anything in the neighborhood. I mean, I, I grant you, this makes a big difference because you've got the existing buildings in front of it, which screen it, but I, I mean, I think it's part of our due diligence to make sure that it's not an overwhelming mass. And it looks like you've demonstrated that, so...
Well, that's, you know, that's why we, we went to this extent to sort of try to identify what you see through these cross-sections, 'cause I think this is the best way to explain it. Because at first, you don't believe it. It's hard to fathom. And then, but by a combination of the, you know, in terms of the height, the elevations and so on, it, it gives you that perspective. Peter?
Is it possible to cycle back to the beginning of the slideshow where you showed photos of the existing?
Yep.
I don't wanna dwell, I just wanted to quit, keep going back, back, back. Okay, right there. Okay, thanks.
Is there any, um, like, uh, other rooftop units going on this building? Like, I didn't actually get, is, is it warehousing and distribution that they're doing in here? Or what are they actually doing?
Yes.
Will there be anything on top of the roof? Or is it the height, what you see, what we'll see?
Well, the, the top of the roof does have some features and, and, um, Sean, I don't know if you wanna weigh in on that, other than, I mean, really, the average height is around 95 feet beyond the stair towers. Uh, there might be the possibility of rooftop solar on there, but, uh, under your bylaw, it's allowed to increase another two feet, but that still would be below the maximum height that we were looking for in terms of, uh, a...
But to that point, would you put the utilities on the top and, or would you put a parapet there or...
There, there is a parapet there.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a hip roof, but it's such a big roof. So when you get down to the, the face of the panel, the concrete panel, you're, you know, you're several feet, you're several feet high with the parapet.
So if I understood correctly from what you said earlier, please tell me if I understood. The 105 is the maximum height of any equipment or structures on top of the roof? The actual roof level is closer to what, 906?
Yes, sir. The, the, there's some stair towers and some, some material handling bump outs, what we call them.
Yeah.
You know, that look like a, you know, kind of a three-sided, uh, addition to the outside of the building that stick up another 10 feet. So the parapets, the main roof parapet is roughly 95.
Okay, so nothing is higher than 105?
Correct.
Which kinda, I think gets to your question.
Yeah, so the rooftop equipment is, is, yeah, and it's all, uh, there's nothing massive up there as far as, I mean, they're just, they're, they're units to heat and cool. Um, there's nothing like a smokestack or anything, uh, major up there.
I've been trying not to say anything.
Somebody might wanna stick a cell tower on the, on the...
No, no.
No, 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 we don't.
You don't?
We don't.
You very much don't, right?
We very much don't.
Okay, good.
But having been in that business, then, people come...
Yeah.
Say, hey, come put it on your stair tower or something on your roof.
So, so, um, in, in light of these views, again, this is one piece of, of the, of the redevelopment prop, property, or, or proposal that we wanted to sort of try to clearly articulate in terms of building height and FAR, in terms of massing and so on. And for purposes of, uh, a proposed amendment to the zoning, what we were looking to do is to add a footnote, uh, to the dimensional table under the I-2 zoning district to allow for an increase of building height and an increase in FAR by planning board special permit based on the general planning board special permit criteria. So the planning board would continue to have control over that. And if the planning board doesn't feel we're demonstrated that the height is consistent with the overall neighborhood feel and look and appearance, then that's the planning board's decision. But we know that the planning board wants to be protected and, and they should obviously, you certainly wanna have that ability to, to weigh in on those factors. So, so that, that is the proposal on that piece. That's, again, related only to lot B. So, um, in addition, we're looking to some tweaks or adjustments to the solar bylaw. Basically, under the solar bylaw, under the industrial two district, there is a provision that provides for, for solar and for other renewables. And, uh, what we're trying to do is, is carve out the solar as a separate permitted use within the I-2 zoning district so that it, because of the fact that you have a new solar bylaw, we wanted to carve that out and tie in that permitted use into the I-2 district to the solar bylaw. So, uh, that's another tweak that, uh, that we're looking at. And, um, because of the fact that you have a, a, a size of, uh, of a, uh, solar facility that's, that's identified in the bylaw, I don't think there's any need to have a minimum lot area. And so what we don't wanna do is get caught up in a minimum lot area of 25 acres that's subject to the 75% contiguous billable upland requirement, 'cause I don't think that's the intent. So, uh, that's the reason why, why this tweak in the list of permitted use. Because it's odd, because the, the I-2 zoning district includes not only the use, but it also includes a, a size, acreage size of 25 acres or 10 acres by special permit. So, so that's the adjustment that we're looking at in terms of that. The second clarification is really, um, related to the, uh, use table, uh, in the solar bylaw. It allows, uh, rooftop solar, uh, as an accessory use by right. There are two types of solar that are defined in the solar bylaw. One is sort of what I call, and for lack of a better term, the merchant type of solar, which is what we have out there today, versus the off-grid solar, which is the solar that someone would install and use at their specific building. And so, um, those two definitions are out there in the bylaw, uh, in the zoning bylaw, but they haven't been incorporated into the text. And so what we're doing is tying that accessory use, uh, definition to those two, uh, definitions of off-grid and it's called intertie, uh, grid system, so that it's clear that it's a, it's an accessory use and it covers the whole, it covers the use for the building in 20 and 21 area, which is already installed and up and running. So, so that's the second item. And the third item is, is really a provision in, uh, in the, uh, solar bylaw to provide the planning board with a little bit of flexibility in terms of citing the, uh, locating the solar panels. And the best example I could use to describe that is with, uh, the lot C, if we can go, Nate, uh, to that, that, um, illustration. So basically, you have a front yard, uh, setback along Osgood Street, that's 100 feet. And, uh, the solar bylaw for side and rear requires 75 feet. And so, uh, we're looking for a way to migrate the solar farther away from Osgood Street and closer to the rear of the property. Because, uh, as you see here, there, there are two colors of, of where the solar panels are. Uh, the lighter color is where it's existing page area. Uh, the darker color is the green area of the ball fields. And so by allowing us to relax the setback of the solar in these locations, it allows us to move that solar farther back from Osgood Street, number one. And number two, allows us to try to migrate some of those solar panels out of, uh, the proximity to the wetland resource areas. And so, again, it's a tool that we're looking, uh, for the planning board to consider as a waiver provision. That would be a waiver, um, by special permit, consistent with the other items we suggested. And I think it's more of a site planning tool. We think we can make the solar work as is, but I think that from a planning perspective, if the objective is to try to screen the solar as much as possible, particularly from Osgood Street, then, uh, this may be a tool that would be effective for the, for the planning board to use.
So, one, the solar is, but all the crosshatch areas where it would be?
Yeah, right, in this location.
So it's two separate things, one...
Well, it's...
Upper left crosshatch also?
No, no, that's, uh, no, that's a different resource, just in this location here.
Oh, okay, good.
Just in this location.
I started with the upper left, okay.
Sorry, I took that label off. I shouldn't have taken it off.
John, can I summarize the, it seems there are four different items that you need zoning changes or assistance with. One is the building height, the others, two is floor area, three is moving the solar panels, and four is...
Just definitional changes or...
Well, four is allow, making, wanna make sure that the building 20 and 21 solar panels on there are allowed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
And this is your proposal on how to do that, correct?
That's, that's correct, and, um...
But, but to be fair, just, just, you don't really necessarily care how we get there, right? As long as we get there?
Well...
So my, I guess the reason I asked the question is that I think we kinda have two phases in what we need to do here. One, do we like this idea and this project? And I want you to give us, after I'm done, kinda give us a little more information about what the actual end use and what it's all gonna look like. Because although we're voting on zoning changes and these zoning changes implicate special permits later on, we're really voting on a potential product and a, and a use by, uh, later on for e-commerce. That's what we're actually voting on.
Right.
Uh, and this is the way to, to make that available. Not necessarily that it would happen because it'll have to go through the special permit, but without this, it, it couldn't happen. So this gets everyone in the door. My concern, and frankly, from what I've heard, the idea sounds really good. It sounds like a really good use for this underutilized, massively underutilized property. And this is a low-impact, uh, from what I can tell, use of this property that really would be beneficial. Biggest concern I have is overreaching with our zoning changes in a short period of time to do something that will have unintended consequences either here or elsewhere. Uh, and ha, still have to give that thought about whether that's just minimizing the impacts, 'cause this is, your changes to Article 20 are for all I-2s. This isn't the only I-2 in town, there are other ones. I'm not sure we wanna have 105-foot buildings even with waivers in some of those other ones. So, do we, and this is to talk about, do we just make it limited to this parcel and do an overlay? Do we keep it as an I-2 and put waivers or put area requirements, things like that? Those are the things I wanna think about to, if we're gonna go this route, to minimize potential impacts elsewhere. The same thing with the solar, it gets very, that was a really difficult bylaw to draft. I think Mr. Leary will agree with that. That it was, and we spent a lot of time on that. And it's not perfect, certainly, it could use adjustments, but I also don't wanna just make changes without having given them a lot of thought and consideration. We don't have a lot of time, so to the extent that we can minimize changes and accomplish what's looking to be accomplished, that's kinda where I'm coming at.
Yeah, we have, we have no problem with that. I think that, uh, there are certain ways, if you wanna try to tighten it a little bit, uh, so it narrowly applies.
That's...
We just have to weigh that against the uniformity requirements of the zoning bylaw, and I, I think we can get there, 'cause we've done that in the past with other sites.
Yeah, and...
So that, because of the height and the FAR are only intended to apply to lot B.
Right, and...
And so there aren't many 110-acre parcels, uh, that are able to accommodate something like this, so...
So, um, so could you give us a, I know, again, I know you did it at the board's document, but tonight, we haven't heard anything about what the actual, we've heard a little bit about the project. It's gonna be e-commerce warehouse. about the project. It's going to be e-commerce warehouse. Tell us a little bit about jobs, traffic, whatever economic information you have at the time. The other thing I'd say, and going forward, is the more information that we can have available to this board and to the public, the better. You're asking for a special town meeting in a month and a half. So, I know you're under confidentiality, you're the end user, and it's, I mean, is it essential to a zoning bylaw change? No. But will people and these boards be skeptical of approving something and not knowing who we're approving it for? Yes. And I think you run a real challenge there. So, to the extent that you can go back to whoever, whatever information you guys can give us, the more you can, the better. The more other locations where this has been done and what the impacts have been on the, you know, local economy and traffic and things like that, those are the things when you have a town meeting and everyone has the right to get up and talk about it and ask questions. If we say we don't know, it's really hard for us to sponsor something when, when we are giving answers that we don't know. So.
Yeah.
I just want to echo the chairman's comments. This board has given this advice before.
Right.
And I think it's important that, you know, even June is not that far away. And as the chairman said, if you have to say you don't know, or if the feeling is you just found out, that's often stacks the deck against.
We certainly agree with that. And as quickly as possible, we have six weeks to undertake our outreach and to make our case. And we have a lot of that data available to disseminate and to get out to the public, to get out to the neighborhoods, so that everyone feels comfortable in raising their hand in support of this proposal. So, so we're well on our way to doing that. And in terms of some of the, some of the benefits here, certainly, we have a development team that's probably, you know, second to none in terms of being able to develop a site, to redevelop a site as complicated as a site. There are a lot of moving parts. There's abatement to be done. There's been a lot of due diligence that's been undertaken, extensive due diligence, so they know exactly what's out there and to predict it. But it's a company that has done a lot of these types of projects and is well aware of how these have to run to make it a successful project. There's a projection for the job creation here of 1,500 jobs, which I think is fantastic for this valley, for the Merrimack Valley area. And not to mention the multiplier effect with 1,500 jobs coming to the site and its effect on the surrounding uses. Also, you know, the innovation of this, of this facility is, is probably be one of the more innovative facilities that'll be designed in the country when it's, when it's developed. So that's something also, it's sort of, again, going back to how Western Electric was the height of innovation back in the 50s. And, and so we're coming full circle on that. And so we also, in terms of, you know, one-time construction fees and revenues, we're not going to give any projections right now, but we will have that information available to you. But just an off-the-cuff example, site plan review fee for this site is about $505,000 for an application fee. So, but you know, this town is not convinced by dollars and cents alone. We know that. So, it's not only an economic, but it's also another, it's another quality of life examination too, in terms of what we're proposing out here. And in terms of impacts to town services, very low water usage, because it's not being, using water in terms of processes. In terms of sewage use, it'll just be purely domestic sanitary sewage at a fraction of the, of the allowed usage in that area.
Can you go back to the water for a second? Would you use any of the wells that we heard a lot about in previous discussions?
I don't think we would.
No, okay.
Yeah.
Just curious. I know we just heard a lot about it.
We've, we've also put sewer on the table.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we want to discuss more with the town is the possibility of extending sewer from the site on 125, perhaps as far as to Sutton Street. It's a two-mile route.
What is, and so there's no, the city, no town sewer there at the moment?
There are in certain areas by the Princeton Development, but they're in different locations. It's not really a very well-integrated sewer system. This town has studied sewer for 20, 25 years. There's so many different master plans, so many different alternatives. And so we have a developer that's willing to contribute to that effort.
What, what information do you have or will you have about traffic?
We've undertaken some preliminary evaluations. We'll roll that out as, as we have more information. But just as a rule of thumb, I would say, in terms of daily trips, if I use this correctly, Nate, it's probably a third of the daily trips that would otherwise have been developed with the 40R district at full buildout. So. So.
Do we have ideas on numbers yet?
I mean, in terms of the, the previous, the 2005 mixed-use master plan, which John was referring to, you know, the, the daily trips were just north of 30,000 trips per day.
So we're talking 10,000?
Were under 10,000.
Okay. Yeah, and, I mean, I think, just, again, a word of advice, just give us the numbers as they are, rather than what could have been, just, just tell us what the numbers are, what you're anticipating, when you have them, okay?
Yeah.
As I understood it from your meeting with the board of selectmen, that there would be some truck traffic, but the truck traffic would come 125 and then go to the exit 48, the Ward Hill connector.
Or be routed towards the Ward Hill connector. Absolutely right. And that's, that's what it was designed for.
I think that's a good proposal.
Right.
I think we certainly appreciate that. Again, not in our zoning, you know, bylaw changes that you're suggesting, but I think it's important to consider those things. I think for me, one thing that would be worthwhile to know is if you've had similar projects that you guys have helped develop, what kind of impacts that's had on, if, if any on the community, maybe it has no impacts on, if these 1,500 jobs are coming, are they shopping locally? Are they eating locally? Or are they just coming and going, you know, at different hours of the night? What times does that, it may be no impact, maybe a negative impact, maybe a positive impact, I don't know. But that's information that would be, I think, helpful to have to the extent that you can. And again, understanding all the confidentiality, the more you can provide us on that kind of impacts, I think the more comfortable we are with, you know, giving, saying, okay, 105 feet makes sense, because that's going to allow for the 1,500 workers, that's going to allow for the, this type of manufacturing, and we can understand what kind of impacts that might have on the town. So just the more information like that you can provide us, I think, the better we feel.
Absolutely. And, you know, as a taxpayer, I mean, this is such an incredible economic bang for the buck. And, and again, economics isn't everything. And we'll roll out that economic data as we have it. But again, as, as we were discussing, in terms of impacts on town services, not really significant at all. And we'll roll, roll out the details as we get, as we go forward, but.
That's really it. I mean, it's impact on services, impact on traffic, if you, and any, I don't see really much, but give us information about noise impacts, light, light impacts, you know, what kind of industrial use, what kind of waste or anything like that. And if you tell us this is what they're going to do and then it has no impact, great. But I think those are the questions that we always have when we have industrial uses is the same questions when we had the marijuana discussion at this location, that we asked about what kind of noises are going to be, what kind of light is there going to be? That odor was a bigger concern there than I assume it is. But even if you think it's not really going to be an issue, just, just address it so that we can say we've talked about it and it's not an issue.
So, I'm sorry, guys.
You know, one example is what's the, what's the plan for trucks in terms of idling onsite and emissions?
Right.
I think that is something people would ask about.
Right.
And either for odor or air quality.
Yeah, and just noise.
Noise.
Even though it's not that much, you know, local residential, but.
And I know you can't, you're under non-disclosure for the name of the client, as I understand it. But what can you say about the type of activity? It's e-commerce distribution, is that correct?
Yes.
And is it a specialty e-commerce? Is it general e-commerce? Is there any description, not of the name, but of that type of activity?
Like, so, are we talking about, do they package anything? Or are we, we have food products? Do we have animals? Do we have, you know, what, what's going on in this, in this mystery building?
No animals. I mean, this is.
No, no.
We're not shipping.
Nothing explosive?
Nothing explosive.
Hazardous?
No hazardous materials.
Okay.
This is all prepackaged stuff, so there's nothing that's coming in in big 55-gallon drums or anything like that. So there's no really heavy industrial use. This is all kind of prepackaged material.
Fair to say things would come up more in, in a large, say, tractor, trailer, truck and go out maybe in smaller, more.
Correct.
UPS-type vehicles, Fedex-type vehicles.
Absolutely.
And as I understand it, you don't anticipate any use of the airport, the local airport, correct?
That's correct.
And same with the, the train, that's not really?
No.
Speaking of which, I hate it if it couldn't happen, you pack with the airport.
All right, well, I assume you guys will check with the FAA.
Yeah, we're, I mean.
They're stickler.
Yeah, we've been in conversation with them. That's one of the first things we'll double-check. We've already had discussions preliminarily and so on, but, right, right. It's not within a five.
Remember when we did the Duncan Thomas?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Light pole that was too high and so.
Shut them down. I assume when, when we were able to get with the Princeton properties and all that, which is much closer to.
Much closer. This is so.
True.
Is there any more description you can give, other than e-commerce delivery or whatever? If the answer's no, the answer's no, but.
I mean, specific questions, I mean, it's, it's trucked in, in bulk. It's sort of broken down in this facility.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's many different items.
Okay.
It's a lot of smaller items that are in bins. And that's why they're able to use robotics to move these bins around. So they may go and say, hey, I need the box of 25, and the robot may go get a box, and you need six. And you take those out, and you, you put them in, and you package them and.
Primarily commercial, or consumer goods rather than commercial?
Absolutely. Yes.
So, I mean, so they're not building anything here then, right?
No, no, no.
So it's, I mean, it seems to me like it's a fancy post office.
I know.
You were getting, you're getting things from, that are shipped there from one area, from all over the world, all over the country, shipped here.
Sure.
And then distributed to the Boston, Manchester area.
Correct.
I just have one more and then I'll stop crying.
No, no, you're fine.
I know. I know we talked about no intended use of the airport, but I'm going to ask that question a little differently. Is all of the material coming in and going out based on ground transport?
Based on ground transport. Be able to be trucked to those facilities. So.
You don't fly any goods into the airport?
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm not talking about the airport.
Right.
Comes in with ground vehicles and leaves in ground vehicles from the facility.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So no drones?
No drones. No drones.
I'm just, I'm just, that was my last. That was my last crying question.
Do you want, do you want to ask about colors?
It's not what I was asking.
No, no, it's, it is. I mean, we're, I mean, seriously though, I mean, to the extent that we can, could disclose it, we would. But we're working on it. Yeah, good. Trust us.
I guess from my perspective, given all of the onks that we had when we did the solar on the site before, the need to screen it is really, in my mind, very compelling. I mean, we had preferred in both the second, first and second iteration of the solar to put it as far to the back as we can.
Right.
So if this is further up, it's, you got to have a good story on screening.
Absolutely.
John, where would you think we would address that? Would that, would that be part of the special permit? Or would that be in?
Well, I mean, to some degree, I have to read, parse, you know, what they've done with the setbacks and what they've done with the screening requirements. I mean, I, my intuition is you probably can manage it, but I just don't know.
Yeah, I agree. What they're looking, I think what they say is that you can get a waiver of the setback, which I would think would come with, which would come with conditions.
Yeah.
The way, is the way I would see it.
Yeah, and you're, and the current solar bylaw does have pretty intensive screening requirements currently. And so, in, in that area, there's not a, a huge difference in elevation in that location, but certainly, we will screen it to the extent necessary because you don't want to see the solar panels from that location.
So let me ask you one more question, John, and then if there's anyone, we don't have a tremendously large crowd here, so I'll see if there's anyone that wants to make a comment or have a question, we'll allow, we'll allow for that. What are you looking from our board?
What we're looking for is if the board has comfort, because we don't have a lot of time to get to the timetable that we need to for June, is if the board feels, has enough confidence such that they feel that they could sponsor these warrant articles with the understanding that they may require some additional modification to satisfy the board. That's what we're looking for, because the selectman may be taking this up very soon and they need some signals from the planning board as to whether they're willing to take the next step with us.
Essentially, essentially two. Meetings.
Right.
To.
So we'll.
Talk about this further.
So, so that, and I asked the question, because is, is that we'll have a discussion about that and about whether or not, if there is interest in that, whether or not we should have additional meetings to, whether or not we would need additional meetings to even potentially get to that comfort level. So, that's why I asked the question. And so I think we'll discuss that. But if there's any, why don't we say, is there anybody that wishes to ask a question or say anything? Mostly about the process, because, you know, we've heard some stuff, but I think whether this goes the way of a planning board-sponsored bill, or a board selectman-sponsored bylaw, or citizen petition-sponsored, there will be public hearings. So, we have all the same information that everybody else has, I think, at this point. But if you have questions or comments more about the process or the idea, welcome to come up and say something. If not, that's okay. We can just discuss. Good. Acting town manager, anything? Good? Everyone good? Okay. Good? Okay. So, board members, what's everybody's kind of initial instincts, thoughts? What, how would you like to approach this? I can say I'm certainly open to additional meetings as necessary. For everyone's information, our next meeting is scheduled for May 14th, which is the annual town meeting. And that's really just to vote on the one item, I think the Wellington Way item, which is still pending. So it's not a real meeting. So, our next real meeting is scheduled for May 21st. We could potentially have a meeting next Tuesday if people want it on May 7th, if, if enough people were available. So.
I'm certainly open to other meetings. I'm very interested in what I've heard so far and want to do what we can to not impede things.
Aaron?
No, I'm, I'm open to it. I want, I want to hear more. I think we, you know, given, you know, experience with a couple of years ago, the Innovation Works, and hearing a lot about that project, and then getting some feedback recently about, you know, having a, a decision going to appeal with, with our fellow townspeople, saying that they, we got the sense that, that there was not a lot of communication about the larger project. So, open to having more meetings to, to fully vet this with, with the limited time that we seem to have.
John?
Yeah, I, from what I've seen, I think it's, this is a good project. But I think, Aaron, you hit the nail on the head that, I mean, E10, that, you know, we don't want to have unexpected consequences from the way it was written there. That, to me, is the big thing, is it's got to be framed the right way so that we don't say, oh my God, why did we do it this way? So.
Right. And so, and so that's my feeling as well. I agree there. I want to have as many conversations about this as possible. Again, stressing the more information we have, the better. The project sounds like it makes sense. It makes sense with our master plan in terms of how, I mean, we struggled with, one, it's not the town's property, right? So 1,600 Osgood has owners, and now we have a potential development. But to the extent that it affects the town and to the extent that we can have a project that has low negative impacts, if, if any negative impacts, and positive impacts, and we want to encourage that and support that. I think this does that. That being said, I think this is a great start to zoning changes, but I think it needs to be tightened, because I think it's potentially over-inclusive. I like the waiver provisions and how you went about kind of doing the waiver provisions for building height and for floor area that gives the, it tells the developers, okay, we can go ahead and start moving forward, but it gives the board discretion later on. So I think that's a good way to go about it. I think we may want to try to use some of that in, in other places. And I think we just need to tighten up whether it needs to be just I two, whether it needs to be I two with certain areas, or whether it needs to just be maybe an overlay for this. Just, all those things are kind of on the table. I think whatever is the most clean, concise way to go about it, I think you'll have the best chance of getting. best chance of getting support from us and from the town.
Right, and, no, certainly agree, in terms of the master plan, I mean, my new goal number one is to use, redevelop existing sites under the master plan, which have adequate facilities. I mean, we all know, we've been looking for the ideal use for this site for many, many years. And so, I mean, in terms of anything that might be controversial and not controversial, it's our, it's our obligation and our demonstration to show you that this is not going to have a significant negative impact on this town, but more importantly, a very positive impact. And, and that's why I'm excited about this, because I think it's a really cool project, and it could, the state administration is really excited about this project as well. I mean, it's a local decision, but they're very excited and behind this project, because of particularly about the job creation, considering what's happened with the, you know, the Columbia gas crisis, and it provides a fantastic employment base, and has a lot of really good components. So, again, it's our demonstration, we have a short window of time. We know the history of, of the site, and, but we're, you know, but, which is not necessarily a bad history, we may, we've learned from it, but we're, we feel we're turning the page on this one, with a new development opportunity.
Quick question about timeline for the actual construction of the project. What are you, at a higher level, what are you looking at in terms of when you'd break ground, when you'd actually get this facility up and running?
So let's assume we have a special town meeting, gets approved, bylaw, that bylaw later gets approved by the Attorney General and all of that, and at the same time, you're doing your due diligence and your peer reviews and all of that, because you know that you're eventually going to come for a special permit. What are you looking for, for, and knowing that there's a whole project on 125 with the state and redevelopment there, and you want to be on the same page with them?
Well, I guess, in the perfect world, if we could align all the state permitting and the local permitting, I think we'd like to at least start the work at the beginning of next year. But there's a lot of relocation work that's required, a lot of abatement work, that there are a lot of moving pieces.
So, when would, when would you anticipate, you know, you'd have to, you know, come back to us for site plan review? I'm sure, you know, there's some demo activities you could, you could probably undertake, but when would that happen? What I'm getting at is, you know, lot C is still going to be owned by the existing owner? Is there a, I guess, what is the necessity for tackling the solar aspect of this now versus later?
That solar, to make this project work, that solar has to be relocated.
Yes.
Yeah.
But, does that have to happen at a June special town meeting? Can that happen, say, in the next May?
Well, I guess, with respect to any developer, they're looking for certainty, and so the...
We're just looking to simplify the problem.
I hear you, I hear you. I'd like to simplify it too, but I think if we wait on that, it kind of delays, it creates additional uncertainty in the future with respect to the solar, and that's an important piece in terms of relocation. And so we have to know that it works from a zoning perspective earlier, as opposed to later. And I, and I get it, we're trying to keep this as simple, because we have a short window. And what we're hoping to do is simplify any of those zoning changes, so that they're readily understandable, and people say, yeah, I get it, I can, I can live with that. And so that's our objective to work with the board on, with respect to narrowly tailoring it, so that, that it really applies to exactly where she wanted, where it wanted to apply, without any negative externalities.
So would...
So it's a long-winded response to say, the sooner, the better for us to make it work.
Would people be available for a meeting next Tuesday, May 7th? Usual, that channel and time, 7 o'clock next Tuesday, would people be available?
Yes.
I can, I should, yeah. Okay. So, Gene, can we try to schedule, is anyone else meeting here next Tuesday? Okay. So we will try to schedule a planning board meeting for next Tuesday. The things I'd like to delve into the actual text, I'd like, can this proposal be, are these slides, can that be put in the packet, so that people have them available?
It's up to you.
I mean, it's all public, you showed it on TV, so it's all public record now? So it really should be available, whether it's an hard copy, so, I mean, I don't, it's all, everything you showed is a public record now.
Right.
So, really, I would strongly suggest that it should just be scanned and given over, so we can just make it back of the bar, part of the back.
They do need to provide, and our minutes need to reflect these pages, so it is public at this point.
Right.
I can scan it in myself?
After we're done, I'll give you a...
It'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, in relation to that, what would your objective be for that meeting on May 7th? What would you like us to provide? I know it's more information, but...
I mean, as all the things we kind of talked about, the more you have, the better. I mean, we can dive into the, the, how to narrowly tailor the bylaw suggestions, but really, it's just more information about the project. I mean, again, the traffic, the impacts, the users, the history, anything that you can tell people about what this is ultimately going to be, because we, those two things, we can talk about separately, but ultimately, that's what, ultimately, that's what people are voting on.
Yeah.
We can tailor this to make it work.
Yeah.
But ultimately, that's what people are going to vote on, and that's, that's what the referendum is going to be about. So, the more information you can have, and the more, that'll give us more comfort in, potentially, if you want us to sponsor this, is what this is going to be about is going to be the most important thing.
It's a large project, and I understand you need more information. I guess it's a fine line between going, going to the detail site plan review versus enough to make you satisfied, that you feel comfortable going forward. So, we'll certainly provide as much information as we can in the end of meeting days, and we're certainly starting our outreach effort as well, to get as much information out to the town as we can. We know that it's difficult, because a town meeting right in the middle, but, but we'll certainly do what we can to give the board some comfort.
Okay. And Gene, maybe at the next meeting, then on the 7th, we can talk about if this is something that we would potentially sponsor, how that happens, and what we, what information we need, and when we need to vote on things, and when we would, and when, at the next meeting, I'd like to propose if it's going to be, whether it's going to be, well, if the Board of Selectmen call a special town meeting, and you're requesting the next week that they do that, correct?
I understand that they may, we've submitted the request...
You've submitted a request.
And they may entertain it, is it May 6th, Monday, the 6th with the...
Monday, we have...
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll see what happens at their meeting. If a special town meeting is called, then we'll have a discussion about when public hearings would occur. So our normal practice is to hold at least three public hearings. I would intend to honor at least that three, so if that requires additional meetings, it requires additional meetings, and we'll talk about a potential calendar. But again, we want everyone to have as much opportunity for information and for questions as possible.
Yeah.
And specify a date, or is that to be determined on Monday?
To be determined. We requested a, the board to schedule...
To schedule one?
A date, we didn't identify a date specific, but if it's sooner as opposed to later, that, that gives us a tight timeline, and in which case, we have to work back from that in terms of public hearings, to legal ad notice for planning board review. And so, I guess, the, sooner we know that the board has enough comfort to consider a sponsorship, the better. Or if they want to, agree to sponsor it, and then they decide they are, they're not comfortable, then that's something that could occur too. It's just, I know, it's, it's a sort of a gray area, but, but I know this is a new project, and we've actually been under a confidentiality agreement up until two weeks ago.
How long? How long have you been discussing this project?
Six, seven, eight months. I mean, I think, roughly about that time.
Okay.
So, and we've been undertaking our due diligence all during that period. So, we do have a lot of information, it's just a matter of what you think you need to satisfy you, in terms of potential impacts, without designing the entire site.
Yeah.
But we just, we want to give you that comfort too, I understand that. I mean, in terms of massing and height, I guess it's, I mean, that's a longer process, that's probably a, well, I mean, in terms of the building appearances and things of that nature, that's something that's more akin to site plan review, but...
It would be really helpful to have comparables, so even if you just told us you did a project in, you know, a suburb in Kentucky, and it had about the same square footage, and this is what we've seen three years later, or two years later, I don't care who it was and/or where it was, really, if, but the more similar to this area, something like, if you have it, something like that would be helpful, you know, just, again, that gives us comfort in what, what we're, not only what we're buying, but what we're selling, because you're asking us to sponsor it, which means we're both buying it and selling it, so...
I think addressing anything that you could consider would be detrimental to the community.
Sure.
Okay.
Always looking at the negative, huh?
No?
No, no, you're doing exactly what you need to do.
Anybody else? Anything else? Okay?
No, I just think it's an exciting project, be nice to see something, you know, if this is the right fit in that property, you know, and, not just economically, but just the jobs it can bring to town, and just, you know, really innovate and make use of the space, so, nice.
Thanks.